Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee. We have a lot to get through tonight, but what I'd like to do, I'd like to actually explain to you how I think it will play out. I have some people who are not members of either committee who wish to speak, and I will take them at an appropriate time, and that is John Gray and Andy MacLeod. You have both given notice, you wish to speak on this, and that is great, I look forward to your views. So what we're going to do first of all, I'd like to set the scene. We have members of the joint subcommittee here, and once I've set the scene, I'm going to invite any of those who wish to, of the joint committee, who produced this report, to add anything to what I've said, because this is a report that we've put together together, and I think it's important that if I've missed something out, they actually come in. Then I will open it to general debate on the report, not the recommendations. And then when we've had the general debate, and I would be grateful if you didn't repeat what other people were saying, we then went to the recommendations, because there's quite a lot of them, and we work on a way forward, and whether you like them or not, etc. This report started as a result... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I've done it again, I do this all the time, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for the record, we've had apologies from councillors Nick Holder, Paddy Blagdon, John Fraser, Tony Gordon-Smith, Jed Hall, Simon Inchbald, Denise Legall, Dennis Lee, Libby Piper, Chris Storey, and Liz Wheatley.
Thank you. Any others, do we know? Thank you. Declarations of interest?
None received.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, we'll go back into what I was saying. This report really started as a result of a comment that was made to Joint Overview and Scrutiny, and it was me that made it, to the officers, that we have two overview and scrutiny committees, and in some cases, they seem to be doubling up on the work. And the executive agreed that there could be a joint subcommittee of the two committees to look at this doubling up of work. So that some work on housing was done by community, some work on housing was being done by corporate. So we needed to look at the way forward. We started this work and then decided that it was much more than just taking the list and bringing the two lists together, there was much more to it. So we actually started off by saying, we want to seek the views of members. So in actual fact, this is a very good scrutiny piece of work that we have done here. And we circulated a survey to all members to get their views, which was very interesting. And we were also aware that members were not unhappy, but slightly disappointed in the roles they were playing within the council, so that was important to us. We had members who wanted to come and see the committee, so we called them as witnesses. We had members of the executive who wanted to come to the joint subcommittee to put their views in person, and we did that. We also invited a senior member from Guildford Borough Council to come and talk to us, because they too were in fact looking at how they did their overview and scrutiny. We have to remember here that we have not looked at overview and scrutiny arrangements for over 10 years. Now, we are a good council in Ofsted terms, because all our peers, the auditors who send their letters in, and the peers that come and look at us, they're all saying, you're a good council, Wadley, but I think we could be an outstanding council. And there are some things we need to do better, we need to involve officers, we need to get involved ourselves. I personally don't think we understand, all of us, what scrutiny is all about, and scrutiny is something that, if done right, will give value for money to everybody, will make us a great council. And one of the difficulties we have is because we have a huge majority of one political party. But that does not mean we cannot do scrutiny well. The role of scrutiny is in fact to be the critical friend of the executive, and it is to hold the executive to account. Now, one of the problems we have with this is we don't always get the information in time to actually scrutinise properly, and for the executive to take it on board. Our role is to actually make sure we do, and we actually make sure our forward plan for each of our scrutiny committees is such that we take it forward, and we don't just follow the executive's plan. We look at each committee independently and say, what is it we as a committee want to scrutinise? And scrutiny committees have a lot of power, because scrutiny committees can call in, not call in, that's the wrong description, can scrutinise what they like before it happens, whilst it's going on, or after it's happened. And it's very important we all understand how to do it. And one of the great things that came out of this report when we did it was that we identified that there was a need for much more training, so that we understood, and it's, in my view, needs to be mandatory training, so we all have to do it so we understand it, and also better communications, because we're not good at that. And sometimes we ask for information and we're told we can't have it. So there are ways that we need to work together so that we can actually do it. This report does not point a finger at the officers, and we have great officers, does not point a finger at the leader, because the leader is good, there's no problem with the leader, but what it does say is, we all need to do better. And I think, and I hope, having read the report, you will recognise that we have addressed issues that you have come to us with, and that is very, as far as I'm concerned, really, really important. So by working together, and you will see that we are recommending that when we do training, it's not just member training, members and officers train together. And that way, we build up relationships, because if you are a newer member and you don't know officers, and officers don't necessarily know newer members, then you can work together to make sure that you all understand what we're doing, and we are doing this for the benefit of the people we represent. We're not doing it for our own egos, it's for the people we represent, and I think that is very important. There's a lot of work to be done moving forward, but I suggest that we do that, and we'll talk with officers to see how we might progress that, working together. Now, I'm going to stop at that point and ask my colleagues on the committee, have I summed it up? Is there anything you wish to add? Jenny?
No.
Peter?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Chair. I think the important thing is really that over 40% of the councillors of this council came along and spoke to us from time to time, and the common theme was quite striking in that you thought, oh, they must have read the minutes of our last meeting. There was certainly that, and what we have suggested in the committee report comes from a great deal of common ground amongst the 40-odd per cent of councillors.
All is, okay, that's fine. So, ladies and gentlemen, over to you, it's for you to comment on the basis of the report. If you wish to challenge any of the evidence, you can do that outside, because Fiona was working as our officer, and she actually collected the evidence from a number of different councils. We're one of the last councils to review our governance arrangements. Okay, so, Michael?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I think it's an excellent report. I don't think I could argue with the general theme running through the report, which is to underline how important overview and scrutiny is, and that has to be recognised by the whole of the council officers and everybody else, that it's an important process which needs to be adequately funded. I'm delighted that the committee has dismissed the idea of going back to committees, because even if Mul Valley can change from having been committees till fairly recently, having been, you know, on this council last century, when we did have committees, talk about repetition. I have noticed over the recent years that at overview and scrutiny meetings, we see less and less of the executive. Quite often, years back, you'd have two or three members of the executive sitting at the back, there to hear what was being said, and to contribute with the chairman's permission to the debate. And in recent years, it's pretty rare to see an executive member there, and therefore to improve communication is vital, and I think the idea of, for example, having an executive member being called to the committee to be scrutinised as to what's going on within that executive member's portfolio is a good thing. I also think that to have the audit committee look at certainly the financial matters that overview and scrutiny look at at the moment, you know, such as the treasury management and all the treasury and financials, because I hope that we will have on the audit committee people that are pretty good at figures and financially, therefore they're the experts, and why shouldn't they scrutinise the financial side? I'm slightly less sure as to whether it's right for the audit committee to take over the standards role, because I think you have a slightly different mentality when you're dealing with standards as you do with audits, and I think it's a slightly different type of situation. And standards committee, I mean, hearing committee, I think it was mentioned, would be under audit, but as chairman of the standards, we try and avoid hearings and try and sort things out behind the scenes, and there's a certain skill in doing that, which doesn't really need, I think, the audit committee to trample over it, is my own view. More training, yes, for everybody, that must be the right thing, but having had, having sat through the training that we had at the beginning of this council term, and having a repetition of it in Aldershot, I'm not quite sure whether they're the right trainers. I wouldn't like to have to sit through them for a third time, because I just don't think they related well. It was so airy-fairy, you just didn't know where, you know, I found that a pretty disappointing evening at Aldershot, I have to say. So yes to more training, yes to better communications, yes to the principle that overview and scrutiny is important, but what we, of course, we don't get down to in this report is exactly how we're going to divvy up and how we will sort out, how we're going to deal with overview and scrutiny between how many committees we're going to have and so on. But I think certainly to have a group that sorts out what goes on which, for particular items maybe, not necessarily set in tablets of stone, and also, I think it's absolutely wrong that we need the permission of the executive if we want to have a group to sort out a particular problem. So if we want to have a group looking at, as we did, the waste ground in Farnham, where there had been a refuse tip which we dealt with at last council, we had to get the executive's permission to have the group, it shouldn't have to be. I think we need to be independent on that, and that needs the constitution rewritten to take that out. And I understand in other places that's not the norm. So I think it's a good report, and certainly the principles in there, and most of the recommendations generally, I can't argue with.
Michael, thank you very much. I'm going to ask Jenny to come in next, but can I just make one very important point? The committees we have at the moment do not relate to our corporate plan, and what we need to do is to set up committees, and we have not recommended them quite deliberately, because we need to think about it, and I'll give you an example, and that is, on corporate, we have corporate, which deals with housing, and we also have, amongst a load of other things, and we also have a housing improvement subcommittee. In my personal view, we should revert to a housing committee, and we should deal with it once, because at the moment, we debated in the corporate subcommittee on housing improvement, then we debated again the following week, when we actually, and the tenants' panel would be involved on the housing committee, so we wouldn't do away with their very important part that they play in developing our housing strategy. But housing is becoming increasingly important to this council, and therefore, and we're building houses, and we don't know, it's not our forte, building houses, and what we ought to do is, we ought to be able to scrutinise all of that. This is just one example. Another example we talked about was the JPC. At the moment, the housing enforcement, the planning enforcement people go to each subcommittee with the same report, all for information, and what we said was, this is a waste. You know, JPC comprises most of the people who are on the subcommittees, it ought to go there once, and that's it. So it's those sorts of things we need to work our way through. Jenny, I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much, Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to reassure councillor Goodrich, I don't ever want to go back to Aldershot either, and we have identified an excellent trainer, who I think we will definitely be looking at bringing down here, from the Centre for Public Scrutiny, and it is really good training and very, very appropriate, so be reassured, please, we won't go back to Aldershot.
Thank you very much. Andrew?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I may take a slightly different view to my learned friend on my right, but some of my speech, which was written beforehand, does briefly cover recommendations, not for or against, but to illustrate my points, if I may, Madam Chairman.
If you'll brief, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The review is instructive, and many of the comments from members are, to say the least, interesting and self-critical. I have a preference for select committee method of ONS, modelled along the lines of the parliamentary approach, and I'd like to quote from the excellent internet Wikipedia. "A select committee is a committee made up of a small number of parliamentary members appointed to deal with particular areas or issues originating in the Westminster system of parliamentary democracy. Also, the Commons' select committees are generally responsible for overseeing the work of government departments and agencies." End of quote. "They started about 40 years ago and seem to be going strong, especially judging by the publicity they receive." Wikipedia states, without any further clarification, "Some English local authorities also have a select committee system as part of their overview and scrutiny arrangements." And I note that in the evidence presented in this report, both Sevenoaks and Tunbridge Wells do have that mechanism. This is the brief point about recommendations. Some of the report's recommendations, for example 16, holding the portfolio holder to account, seem designed to follow what parliamentary committees do, and 19, suggesting that all non-executive members be eligible, is similar to the parliamentary, quote, "The chairs of the majority of select committees have been elected by the House as a whole." I think the ONS committees should be given definite responsibilities which can't be overlooked or ignored. I would like to briefly contrast ONS with the Audit Committee. The latter has a number of specific responsibilities, including the absolute requirement to approve the annual accounts. Remember that phrase, "Depend upon it, sir, that when a man knows he is to be hanged in a fortnight, it concentrates his mind." Apologies, when the chairman of the Audit Committee knows that he has to sign off the accounts, it concentrates the mind of all members of that committee, and I believe we conducted a thorough review. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. I think, just to clarify things, we have called them boards when we're talking about the committees that we might have in the future, but they are the equivalent of select committees, but we didn't want to get the thing confused, so we chose the word boards, but they are the equivalent of indeed of select committees, so I hope that sort of clarifies things in your own mind.
Yes, I'm sure, and I'm sure that resultant discussion today will help. Whether or not, as a possible member of the executive, I would like to appear before a select committee...
Oh, you'll enjoy it.
That will be a question to be answered later.
Not a lot, but you will enjoy it. Pat?
Thank you, Chairman. Bearing in mind what you've said, I've been busily crossing off all of the things that I wanted to say this evening, because you have picked up some of them, and my colleagues have picked up some of them, but I will say that I do believe this is a brilliant report. It's probably the best report I've seen, and it's been very carefully investigated. I haven't seen a report like this in a long time, so I wanted to say that. I think it has identified the separateness, if that's the right word, between the backbenchers and the executive. And the backbenchers, I'm afraid this council is failing at the moment to properly utilise all of the gifts and talents that people could bring to this council, and I think this report also highlights that. I would like to see it being a two-way thing, that perhaps the executive would also communicate with the ONS committees to identify issues that they would like the ONS committees to look into, and I have to say, the in-depth reviews, that's the area of work that I've particularly enjoyed, and I think my fellow councillors as well enjoy looking at things in depth rather than superficially, which is what we get to do at the moment, because we often don't get the information until it's too late. I'm sure that I shouldn't be saying this, but something that's very important to me is, perhaps in the short term, we should reconsider, and it has been hinted at in the report, the issues around planning. I have to say that for me, and I think for particularly, perhaps for people in my end part of Cranney, in the eastern part of the borough, planning is very important. We're besieged at the moment, and the way that the local plan is going at the moment, by the time it gets published and acted upon, is going to be too late for our part of the borough. So I would like to see that looked at again in more depth as to whether there could be a separate overview, overview and scrutiny committee for that issue, planning, perhaps only in the short term. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat. It could probably be one of the committees that the JPC can set up and invite the portfolio holder to come and talk to them about exactly where we are, because this again is a lack of information that we seem to have a problem with, and what we're trying to do is work together so we don't have that, and I hope that will reassure you. But this is all a developing saga, is that all right? Thank you. Maurice?
Thank you, Chairman. Can I go back to your introduction? You talked about how we haven't looked at it for 10 years, but of course, we did change, I can't remember how many years ago, but three or four years ago, we reduced from three to two overview and scrutiny committees. And in that time, it's not 10 years ago, surely that we transferred housing into corporate. I remember being very disappointed, because I wanted to be in one committee, and housing was one that I wanted within that committee, and it seemed to fit. It no longer does, it's not there, and that's all it, that surely is not 10 years ago. Am I really getting that old and forgetful? But one of the problems we had with three committees, and still sometimes we have, is getting sufficient members to actually volunteer to be on the committee and then attend, and going to more of them is, back to more of them, it may create a problem in terms of getting people who are willing to participate. I agree that the report is extremely good and extensive, but it's not an officers' report, and what we get at a meeting is an officer's report. And as Pat said, we don't get information early enough to actually do anything, and because we've consolidated, we want to rush through the meeting and not spend too much time on any one particular element, so we're not scrutinising, we're just listening.
I have to say, I have to disagree with you. What we did, we just moved one service area from one committee to another. We have not done an in-depth review, as indeed this is, for over 10 years. So we've just tinkered with it, not actually looked at it thoroughly, and in fact, it is in the report, we do actually mention it in the report, so I'm assuming everybody's read the report, and it is in fact in there. So, yes. Brian?
Thank you, Chairman. I also say that I feel it is a really excellent report. I have to admit that for a great many years, I have been a confirmed committee man, and I think probably having read the report, my leaning towards the committee system is probably based on the fact that ONS clearly has not really worked in this council. I would hope that some of the suggestions within the report do get implemented, because I think I am fast losing my leaning towards the committee system if I reread the report again, but at the moment, I'm happy to go along with it, I believe there are some excellent suggestions in there. I think that having moved from three ONS to two, perhaps the make-up of the two could do with a great deal of rethinking, but perhaps at the moment, I will just stop there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Brian. One of the recommendations that the committee talked about was that we went down to one scrutiny committee, not overview and scrutiny, but one scrutiny committee and four boards that did the overview part as well as a bit of scrutiny, so that in fact, and one of the boards was finance and procurement, because we are very weak on procurement, and we need to actually make sure that we've got that right. So there is a lot in this, thank you. Carol?
Thank you, Pat. I'll try not to repeat, it's very hard when you come way down the line, but, you know, as you know, I have very strong views on this, and I feel we need a total change of mindset. I agree with the recommendations, I agree with what Michael said, a lot of what Andrew said, you know, I have no problem with change and looking at it, and no problem with changing certain items onto others. I have a complete and utter failure to understand what the heck we mean by overview and scrutiny on this council, as you know when I came to your group. Maurice mentioned not attending, well, what the heck's the point at the moment of attending ONS? Nobody listens to a word you say, I mean, you can be as eloquent as you like, you can put in hours of work towards the speech, and it doesn't make a jot of difference to man nor beast, and I think this is this total mindset. We have got to actually believe that we've got 57 intelligent councillors representing residents of Farnham and elsewhere, all of whom need a say in whatever goes on in this council, and at the moment, we don't have that. I don't think it's... I don't think it's the fault necessarily of the system, I think an executive and ONS can work perfectly well, I think committees can work perfectly well, but at the moment it doesn't, and it doesn't because we don't trust each other with information, I know we keep coming back to that, but I have to say it, those of us who have been on the council for a long time will know how much information we used to get in the past, we used to get sort of huge, great phone directory sized reports sometimes, far too large, but we were given the information, we were trusted with the information. If you've got the information, you can criticise, you can overview, you can scrutinise. If you haven't got the information, you can't, as somebody said, you just turn up and you nod something through, you haven't got the time or the inclination to go through a very long agenda, very often shared in a fairly woolly way, and the whole thing just, you know, completely loses its point. I'm all for select committee mode if we can get that working properly, but we have to do that, the whole thing has to be 57 councillors plus the officers really sort of buying into this change of mindset, that every single person in this council chamber, you know, should have a fair say and an equal say, and that their views should count somewhere along the line. And at the moment, as I said earlier to Mary and I think to John, you know, the more experience I gain on this council, the less influence I have with it, you know, it just seems a complete and utter waste. I'm not stupid, I'm really quite bright, but nobody gives a hang about what I have to say at overview and scrutiny, and I, you know, I don't have a monopoly of wisdom, but I have enough to contribute. And I think this is a real crying shame that we don't just really use the executive. I think it was it, somebody mentioned that, I think it was Pat, and I have to disagree with you, that the executive should ever tell us what to do at ONS. I mean, I don't even want them at the meetings to be perfectly honest unless we're telling them what we want them to hear, you know. I've had ONS meetings in the past where we've had two or three executive members and they've just taken over. I don't want to hear what the executive says all the time, we hear them enough, you know, I want to have a look at the issues, I want to know that what I'm saying is going to affect the residents that I represent in Waverley. As I once said to Christine Pointer all those years ago, you know, I am not here to represent Waverley in the Bourne, I'm here to represent the Bourne in Waverley, and that's what I want ONS to do, I want to be able to hold that executive to account, but I can only do that if the executive will trust me with information. And over the last, I don't know how many years, I'm not blaming anyone in particular, the executive has just taken everything behind closed doors. I haven't a clue what's going on in most areas of this council, I hear about it, social media, Herald, you name it, but the chances of getting it through an executive member are very, very slim. It's a mindset, and it's something I hope this report will kick off a change, a start that we can actually celebrate the collective wisdom of this council, because it's not bad.
Thank you very much indeed, Carol. It's very interesting, we have tried to address that in the report, because under the 2002 Act, the executive should not be active members of an overview and scrutiny committee. They can come and listen, and if they wish to say something, they may give notice, but they should not be taking part in the debate, because they are two separate entities, you know. So we have tried to address everything you've said, Carol, because you came to us and we met with you and we took all that on board. But you are right, as I said in my introduction, it is the people out there that we are representing, and it's quite interesting because the committee has met with Paul Wenham to discuss the content of the report, and tonight we met with Robin Taylor, and I can assure you that the officers are on board with this report and have indeed welcomed it. And one of the things I have mentioned is trust. You know, you have got to, there may be contractual stuff that you can't share with members, that's another story, but we have got to be honest with each other to be able to move forward. So I hope that will reassure you, Carol, and we're trying, we're trying, and we hope we have reflected that in the report. Peter.
Thank you, and Jim. Just a point for councillor Bayern sitting next to me. Many of the agendas we have for ONSs at the present time are reports to note. You have to read them, you have to take time, the officers are spending a great deal of time, there are other ways of doing it, we want to scrutinise. And one of the points that we have made, and I emphasise again, that the chairs of scrutiny and other committees would report their findings, their observations to the executive, so that we don't get what we do at the moment, where for example corporate INS, late in the cycle, goes to the executive not as a written form but as comments to note, a verbal comment, and they don't get the oomph that I think they deserve in certain cases.
Thank you very much, Peter. I mean, one of the things that the subcommittee is saying is that if there is a scrutiny subject, and let's take the MERS scrutiny that we did, which is held up as an example, an exemplar of good scrutiny, the chairman of the scrutiny committee should present that report themselves to the executive. Because scrutiny is important, and we are not doing that, and therefore we should be doing that, because it's the work of members scrutinising a particular subject. And therefore we ought to be, as members, the committee should be presenting that report and being challenged on the report by the executive, and so we move on. So I'm hoping you'll be reassured that that is one of the thoughts in our recommendations. I have got that right, guys, haven't I? This is to my subcommittee here. Thank you. Kiki.
Thank you, Chairman. Throughout the report, one of the main issues that you actually said in your introductory speech was that is flagged up time and time again is the effect a party with an overwhelming majority is detrimental to the process of overview and scrutiny. That, I mean, I've got endless page 18, page 19, page 21, 31, for example, having one party with an overwhelming majority does present an extra challenge for ONS members in exercising their roles of holding the executive to account. It can be difficult for ONS members of the same party as executive to appear to challenge decisions in public. It is also recognised that the opposition members are also constrained in their ability to hold account if there's insufficient members to trigger a call-in. I mean, there's lots more, you know, that are there, but I won't go through it all because you've already read it all. And it says there is some indication that scrutiny is better developed in councils with no single party political control. And all of those points establish a need for change in the setup of the ONS committee whereby the chairperson, I think, should be a member of the so-called opposition, as it was some time back. If the role of the chairperson is to challenge the executive, then they should not be from the same party, or at the very least there should be a joint chairmanship, one from the opposition and one from a more independently minded majority party member, happy to put their heads above the parapet without fear of retribution. And I say this because within this report there are elements of concern about and from those who fear to go against the party faithful. That's one thing. On major and contentious issues such as, in our case, Unswold, Brightwells and all the rest, I believe the portfolio holder should be at the meeting to answer questions instead of relying entirely on the officers. I mean, those are major issues, and as portfolio holders, I think they are ultimately responsible and should therefore be present. And those are the things that I think are important within this report. Thank you.
There is no reason why portfolio holders should not be present at any overview and scrutiny committee, but under the Act, they should not take part in the debate unless invited. That is the Act. You know, we have to go within the Act.
But we can invite them.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
They can come without being invited.
Right.
You know, it's interesting, we have one portfolio holder here tonight, and that's it. And that's an existing portfolio, and here we are debating a very important report concerning the future, and I find that quite interesting. And on the business of a majority party, it is a challenge, it can be done, but we've all got to have the will and we have to challenge, but it can be done. Who have I got next? John Williamson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to just first of all thank all the officers and the members that filled in the questionnaires and that spoke to you, and particularly the members of the subcommittee, for what's clearly a very hard-hitting report. Although the methodology, and I mentioned this at the time in my meeting, doesn't actually follow the Centre for Public Scrutiny's self-assessment system, nevertheless, the process has collated issues extremely well, and it's produced an extensive list of real concerns by members. I think it's clear to all of us that some drastic action is necessary, not only to restore public confidence, but also to address the many concerns expressed by both the backbenchers and executive number three, whoever he was. Interesting read. I'm sure some of you during the past few ONS meetings, executive meeting and even the last council meeting, members represented residents' requests that certain important matters are addressed, including the 2014 fraud incident at ONS. That sort of thing could be, and should be, able to put to bed very, very easily, just a few simple questions, a few basic scrutiny questions, but it's been refused. Why should these things be refused? They should go to ONS. Anyway, I'm sure many of you will recall the ONS meeting last October, which was dedicated to the local plan, well, the draft spatial strategy. I know how I felt after we'd all made our statements and the chairman's summary seemed to be quite unrelated to the issues that we as members had been talking about. We were told that the local plan was to be published in April, and ONS members wanted to be constantly updated. I for one am deeply concerned that we're headed for more delays on the local plan and probably a failure.
Mr Williamson, can I just stop you? We're not here to debate the local plan, but I do take your comments leading up to that point on board, so if you'd like to not debate the local plan, because otherwise we could be here till breakfast, and I haven't organised any.
Yeah, well, I just think that the ONS activity is being excluded from the local plan process, and it could be disastrous for not just the west but also the east of the borough, and I doubt that many of us here think that that's acceptable. If we're genuine about bringing effective ONS to Waverley, then we should start the job now with the local plan, hence I'd like to propose that we agree now to put in place a task and finish group, which you'd suggested.
Mr Williamson, we cannot do this at this meeting. The local plan and planning matters are a matter for the current community ONS committee, and you need to address that there. And it's part of the constitution. You can do it, but you need to actually do it at community, but we can't do it here, we can only actually talk about the report. Okay? And I understand where you're coming from, but we all have a part to play, and you can ask your chairman of your committee to do something. It's not just down to the chairman to do it.
It's been asked on several occasions and turned down, thank you.
Well, you know, go to the leader. Barry.
Thank you, Chairman. This report is really important because it's, for the first time in a long time, it gives me confidence it's going to address change, and change is what we need. I take on board what's been said about the local plan, and Patricia put it very eloquently earlier. Some of us around this table for years have got a reputation for being boring and banging on about it and asking for SIGs and asking for this, that and the other, and going on and on and on about it, and felt that we were never listened to. I believe there's been a culture within this council where it's convenient to have kept members at arm's length, and that's why we're in the position we're in with the local plan, is because we weren't listened to then, and hopefully we are and will be listened to in the future. What I think is good that may come out of this is, at the last full council, again, I asked for a SIG or a task group or some sort of forum, and I've been told that that will be granted, and that's the kind of thing that I need to see to give me confidence, because if I don't have confidence, I can't go back to my residents and give them the confidence that they need to have in this chamber. I think Carol is absolutely right and described it beautifully, how many of us have felt, how many of us have been excluded, and how many new members feel isolated because they haven't been around. It takes a lot of courage if you're a new member to sit in this forum and speak up out of fear of sounding daft, having the wrong accent, maybe not addressing the committee correctly. And all of this going forward, I think we need to take on board, and we need to embrace everybody and everybody's opinion, and I really hope that going forward we can address some of those issues that have frustrated the life out of many of us, because in three years' time, many of us won't stand again for the very reasons that what's the point when you're not listened to? So hopefully going forward on trust and all sorts of many aspects, change has got to happen, if we don't get change, our residents are going to lose even more faith in us. What I would say in terms of having a big majority, it's never healthy, because we can't be held to account, but at the same token, I don't think any Conservative in this room should feel that they can't speak out against the same party in fear of anything, because we all have our own minds and we need to use it. So I don't feel being a Conservative, I have to toe the line, I feel as though I can say what I want and I'll continue to say what I want, and if it's frowned upon, as it has been, as it has been, but it's not going to stop me from doing it, because I don't represent the Conservatives here, I represent my community who elected me. Thank you, Chairman.
Mayor, I think you've summed that up beautifully. You know, we are here to represent our people, the people who elected us, and if that sometimes may be a bit of a disappointment to the executive, then for me, that's tough. Okay, next one. Anna James, Anna.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, as a new member, I can assure you it's very different from being a backbencher. Those two are different, I'm a backbencher and a new member, but I did do 12 years on another authority. Waverley is completely different, it is run completely differently. I have to say that I started as I was going to continue from where I was before, and at my, I think, one of the first ONS, I asked a question on housing, and the look I got from everybody who turned round was unbelievable. I couldn't make out whether it was, God, what an amazing question, because I was scrutinising, or you shouldn't ask that, because I think it came as a bolt out of the blue, because nobody had even thought of asking that question. But I can tell you from that moment, I have felt not able to ask interesting questions or perhaps difficult questions because of the reaction I got from certain people. And I do think, I feel very sorry, as a backbencher and a very independent, I would sum myself up as an independent Conservative, because I'm not a socialist, that's the difference. And I have to say the other night, and actually on several occasions, members of the opposition, which are very small, have wished to ask questions, perhaps they're new, I don't know, and they have been shouted down, and I think at full council the other night, I was embarrassed, being a Conservative, because they were jeered at, you were jeered at, and I think it was appalling, because it says here, people should ask questions, they should scrutinise. If you're embarrassed about asking, I'm a new one and I don't understand, that's why I'm asking the question, but you do end up in this atmosphere of being frowned upon, looked upon as not, well, you don't know and you shouldn't ask questions, you should have come before, but sometimes during a meeting, you don't know what you want to ask before you get there. And at the full council, which is run very differently from East Hampshire, you've got to almost say you want to ask a question before the meeting. Well, it isn't until somebody else raises a point do you actually then think, gosh, what a good question, I want to know more about that, but it can't be done. So you end up by actually sitting back and not saying anything. But I do feel from, I'm only new to the area, I've only been here four years, and people have said in people have said, in Chillingfold, Whitley and areas I am, that it's definitely run by a closed shop. I say, I can assure you, I don't run it as a closed shop, and I will try my best. That's the view that I've got from outside, it's run as a closed shop, and that I do think needs to change. It's slightly an old boys' club, even within back-benchers, and I do think that should change, and it is all here, but as long as something is done about it. And I'm very happy to ask difficult questions, I don't mind, I've got nothing to lose. So if you want a bad question asked, I'm the person to ask it for you. Okay?
Thank you very much, indeed. I think there are two issues, and there are ways that we have to work within full council, which is part of the constitution. You can be much more free in your select and overview and scrutiny committees than in full council, and sometimes in full council, that is where the political point scoring is generally made. The work is done by the select and the overview and scrutiny committees, and it has always been thus. And I would say to new members, please read and understand your constitution. That is really very, very important. And when, like I did tonight, I said, we can't do that tonight, we can't. But look at your constitution, and there are ways you can do it, and you should do it, and that really is very important. You can't always do it in full council in the same way. Kika, you wanted to come back?
Yes, I did. Actually, without criticising you too much, I think what you, this lady here, sorry, I don't know anyone brought up. In what I had to say before, I suggested that we had a member of the opposition to chair, and I think that would make it much easier for the other people who are not so, not in the club, so to speak, and that wouldn't get jeered down in the way that it has happened to people like councillor Williamson, and also would make it easier, because I think they would be probably a bit more sort of egalitarian about stuff if we do have this element of palsyism that's going on, as far as I can make out. And when I mentioned this about having a chairperson, you sidestepped it very nicely. And I would like you, I'm asking you here and now, why isn't that a consideration? Why could we not consider that? I mean, what's wrong with something like that? It seems to me, given all the information in this report, and there's said screeds of things about where you have a majority party, you know, on such a large level, it's not beneficial to the council, and I feel that that would be an opportunity to change something.
If you read your constitution, it is possible to have a member of the opposition chairing an overview and scrutiny committee, but if you read your constitution, there is a set number of members of an opposition. Okay?
Yes, I'm aware of that, but I don't see why, I mean, can't we change the constitution? This is six years ago, it was allowable, and then they changed it, so it could be changed again, and I don't know why it was disallowed.
Your point is made. Thank you. His name. Can I have Mr Gray? You've been sitting there very patiently.
Thank you, Chairman. Patiently, yes, but interested in the observations and the comment, and I'm very encouraged by the debate that's taking place. Let me say upfront, I'd like to thank the subcommittee for their excellent work and the comprehensive document. This is the best example I've seen of a review report since I became a councillor, and probably amongst the best I've seen in my working life. The reason for that is the depth it's gone into, the way you've explained your process in there, the listening that you've done, it all comes across, and it's, for someone like myself with not as much experience as a lot of other councillors, allows me to understand what people's feelings are. I thought I want, tonight, I'd like to make two observations, well, actually three observations on it. One, I'm very encouraged by recommendation six, and I don't know whether I'm allowed to comment on recommendations at this point, I'd hate to break any procedural rule. All right, it's the inclusion of audit in this process, in this consultation group. I think that's very needed. There's a lot of complementary roles between ONS and audit. I'm sure Jim Edwards has basically made that comment in the subcommittee. I think it's beholden on both of us to hold officers and the executive to account. We do it in a different way, and there are issues that come up within audit where we'd like to perhaps stray into the ONS, and maybe there's areas in the ONS they would like audit. But I think it's very important we keep those barriers and we understand and communicate. So I'm very encouraged by that. I also am very interested in recommendation 11, because the audit committee currently has a responsibility to overview and approve the annual governance statement. It's one at which we made a number of changes in the last 12 months, which I don't think had been made previously, or not so many changes. And the reason was, well, we sat down and thought about it, we thought about what it was communicating. I'm not sure that we do necessarily look at the governance in the way you're implying in there, and perhaps we should change the way we do this to become more effective, and I would welcome that role within audit. I'm a little bit concerned, along with councillor Goodridge, that audit should perhaps have responsibility, or it's suggesting it should, it's not recommending, it's suggesting have responsibility for the hearing committee. That's one I think I would need to have some more understanding of, and to understand the reasons behind why the suggestions were made. I have one last point, which is about implementation. You have two recommendations in there, 13 and 20, and I think you should be more inclusive in the recommendation. I see the lot of work that you've put in this, don't just launch this report and let someone else try to implement it. I would like to see the report go forward with your recommendations for implementation, your recommendations for milestones, how you're going to measure success of this. There's a massive cultural change here, don't let it disappear into the bureaucracy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, John. You may rest assured that this is an interim report. We now have to go on to the more difficult one, and that is involving the constitution SIG, involving officers, involving members into how we move forward, what committees we have. Now, we put this report together in a fairly short period of time, because we met every week, and in the final week, we met sort of every other day to get to this stage, to put it in and get it through before the start of the council year. It does not mean that the start of the council year, we're going to suddenly have all these new committees, but it does mean that we are going to work towards what we will all believe to be the best way forward for us as a council. And as I started off by saying, we are a good council, but we could be a very, very special council, and I think we've got it in us. And one of the things we did not do when we had new members this year, which we've done in the past, is the leader, or whoever was selected, actually interviewed every new member to see what their skills were. And then we could actually put skills and aspirations to committees. And that, for us, was something we failed to do and would have been better for all of us had we done so, I believe personally. And I think the subcommittee also felt the same.
Could I just come back as a new member? I was interviewed by the leader, I was asked what my opinions were and skill set, but I got the impression at the end of it that, a bit like a Chinese meal, it didn't last very long, in terms of effectiveness.
I'm one of the new members also who responded to this consultation, out of the 19 who responded, so I'm very interested in the report. And I have to say, like other members have said, I think it's a very, very good piece of work, it's extremely well-written, it's very interesting, and it's actually, I would describe it also very thought-provoking. Probably the most interesting paragraph is 2.8, at the bottom of page seven, where it says that the fundamental issue is a cultural one, in that ONS is not highly valued by members, both executive and OS members or officers. And it goes on to say, as a result, over the last eight years in particular, there's been a gradual self-reinforcing decline in the effectiveness of ONS. I think that slightly gets it the wrong way around, actually. I think the reason that people don't value it is because it's not seen as effective, actually, rather than the other way around. And I'd like to actually sort of say, I strongly support that view. I think a very interesting example of the lack of effectiveness of ONS is on a very, very important issue recently, where the community ONS committee considered the draft spatial strategy. That meeting aroused a great deal of interest, a lot of members who aren't members of the committee came along and spoke, including myself, and there was a very good discussion, and the crux of discussion really was, there was one group of members who were very keen to see Dunstford Park as a key park of the local plan, there was another group that felt the exact opposite. Yet the report, and there's a lot of other good points made, and the report was therefore produced for the executive, but the actual comments that went forward to the executive were in relation to the actual discussion that took place. The suggestion to the executive was that Dunstford should be used, but somewhere down the line, in five or 10 years down the line. Absolutely nobody had said that at the actual ONS committee meeting itself. And the other interesting point was that the actual executive meeting itself, not a single member of the executive referred to anything that the ONS committee had said, or allegedly had said, it was completely ignored. Yet the minutes of the executive actually finished, as they always do, by saying, taking into account the views of the overview and scrutiny committee, that the executive had decided to do whatever they decided to do, which in this case was to adopt this draft strategy. Before I was a councillor, actually, I used to watch executive meetings, I either attend them or watch them on the internet, and I think I'm quoted in this report at one point saying, as a fairly well-informed member of the public, prior to being elected, I was not aware of the ONS function. And that's because actually what happened at that particular executive meeting is what happens at every executive meeting, the views of the ONS committee is routinely completely ignored. So what it means is that we're all wasting our time in the ONS function, and we need to consider a better way of doing things. And I'd like to comment about the recommendations, because I'm very much inside with Andrew Bolton, if I've got the correct name, that parliamentary select committee model is very much the one we should be adopting, and that would be an opportunity to question executive members, in fact, at a point before they decide their policy, not sort of routine discussions after the whole thing is tied up, that will be completely ignored. So I'm very much in favour of a parliamentary-type select committee with actually smaller committees and on the important issues. I'd say that probably well over 90% of the decisions that this council takes are good decisions and routine decisions. We've got professional officers that give good advice. On the whole, the executive members are well-intentioned, they're committed to their portfolios, and they do a good job. But when it comes to some very big contentious issues, things like the local plan, things like the East Street scheme and so on, and things like infrastructure and transport and issues, this council has made some, in my opinion, bad decisions, some very bad decisions, and these could have been avoided if there was a proper scrutiny procedure going on. So I'll leave it there, Madam Chairman, because I would like to talk a little bit more about the recommendations if I can have the chance to come back at that point. Thank you very much.
The constitution does not allow it, Mr MacLeod, but I will be generous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just echo what many of my colleagues have said about what a good report this is, and, you know, as a new member, after a year, it's become quite discouraging to come to meetings, put in the effort to read your papers in detail, make recommendations, have them debated, and then find out that nothing happens. So a lot of the report dwells on attitude and culture. I was very pleased to see that there is also mention of the mechanics of getting the timing right, so that we actually have time to do all of this. I would have brought this up earlier, but it's only really sunk in over the last three months, that actually our minuting system is such that minutes frequently get to the executive or even to council before the committee concerned has had a chance to review them properly and approve them. So my point really is that attitude and culture are important, but basic mechanics, I think, are important, not just for overview and scrutiny, but also for other committees, and I think this might be an opportunity to look at the way that we take our minutes and give members of those committees an opportunity to review them and pass comment on them before they're used by anyone else. Because we were in an audit meeting about four weeks ago, and the first we saw of the minutes from that meeting was actually when they were presented to council. And I raised that with the officers, and the officer's comment was, yes, actually, the first tense, you've got to query them in detail, is in two months' time, when they come back before the audit committee for approval. So I think there's a mechanical issue there that, you know, would apply equally to ONS, and coupled with aligning the committee meetings with the executive work programme, I think there's a big opportunity to almost remove the cultural aspect, just get the mechanics right, so that if you say something at a meeting, you've got a chance to make sure that it's accurately represented by the chairman, who's going to in future go in front of the council, or, sorry, the executive to present it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. I'm sure we can do something about that, because normally we say the minutes have been laid on the table 20 minutes before the meeting, or 30 minutes before the meeting, and they agreed. Well, I defy anybody to actually come up here and read them, quite frankly. So there are some issues about that which I think needs to be taken into account, but the report has taken into account that things get to members too late to do anything about. And we were very conscious of that in the subcommittee, and one of the things we also want to address in the subcommittee concerns the fact that we really need to look at everything we do when it comes to them, including our work programme. We need some training in how to devise a work programme, because there are people who do train in that. Because at the moment, I would suggest, I mean, I think corporate is the one committee that plucks things out of the air and says, I think we ought to look at that, whereas I think community tend to follow what the executive work programme is. So we need to actually have a look at that, to see how we can devise more meaningful work programmes, and I think that will help the work that we're doing. We are not doing badly, and I don't want any negative press coverage which suggests we are. What we're trying to do is to be better, and I think we can be better. Right, ladies and gentlemen, that's one of the best debates we've had. Oh, I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Chairman. And it's just a very brief point, and it follows on, when we've got the system correct, we then have to talk about the system and show that we respect it. This happened with design statements, for those of you who are here, we did all the design statements, they came in, we forgot to mention them, so the planners forgot to mention them. And it was only when we actually made a real effort to bring in these things, talk about them, then the inspectorate started to talk about them, and this is something we're going to have to do with ONS as well. Get it right, but then tell people we're getting it right. Make sure that people understand that we do respect the ONS system, because it does actually work, and therefore they can have some sort of reliance on it. You know, it's nothing that sees like success. If we get it right, we've then got to tell people we're getting it right.
Thank you very much, you're absolutely right. We don't shout our successes from the rooftops often enough, and we have to do it in a way that people understand. And one of the things that we did with this report was to have it written in an understandable form with very little councilees in it. And I think this is a lesson we need to learn with all our reports, that less councilees, more plain English, because people will read them, and they won't, after page 27, switch off and say, I've had enough of this. So we need to work out how we can actually do that. So we need to work out how we can actually do that. There's a lot of work to do, but we have to do it logically and in a way that we're all working together, and I'm sure we can. And that involves everybody. Thank you all. I'd like to now move on to the recommendations. I'm not going to read the recommendation, you have it on your order paper. So, recommendation one. In talking to the officers about this recommendation, the subcommittee have said, this is not This is something we want because we believe we need it. Now, there are different views amongst the officers on this, but at this moment on time, a dedicated ONS support officer is not negotiable. So what's going to happen after this? We're going to ask the officers to come back with proposals as to how we're going to get it, and we're going to look at interim arrangements, et cetera. But can I put recommendation one? Thank you. Recommendation two, and this concerns training, and we're going to do that for heads of service, managers, and also to do joint councillor and officer sessions, and bring in the right external trainers, generally from the Office of Scrutiny from Birmingham. Is that agreed? Yes, you sound a bit... Are you going to sleep? Because otherwise, I'll run through this very quickly. Thank you. Recommendation three, training for councillors. We will arrange for more specific training, particularly for chairman and vice chairman of ONS committees. They are very important roles. And if we're going to take this forward, we've got to have the right people in those roles. And we're looking at Inlogar as a trainer from Birmingham. And specific skills-related questions to Training Needs Analysis questionnaire, we're going to undertake, so that we find out from you, and we won't drop it. Once we've got it, we'll try and use it and find out what you all want and what you want to do. Is that agreed? Yes, certainly, Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is probably one of the few recommendations which involve spending money to an outside source. Have we got the budget?
That is not an issue for tonight, that is for the officers to find it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, officers, I'm sorry, Robin and Emma. We'll work on it together. We'll work on it together. Then we go to recommendation four. Oh, I'm so sorry. Have we agreed three? There should already be a training budget, anyway, in the budget, being serious about it. If we move on to recommendation four. Is that agreed? Thank you. Five? Thank you. Six? Six? Thank you. Seven? Yes, Mr Williamson?
Yes, I was just reading that again. It says, council to recognise that party politics will influence the working of ONS. Do we really mean that?
Yes.
We mean that it, that party politics...
Can do.
No, it says will. You're in effect... I think the wording is incorrect.
What would you like to see it as? Can?
Shouldn't.
If one is being realistic here, it can, but we don't want it to. So can we amend that to can? Thank you. Lost it now. Can, you're right, okay. With that amendment, is that agreed? Thank you. Recommendation eight?
Agreed.
Thank you. What we are going to do is we're going to add any underlying principles for ONS to newly designed webpages, so that if our residents are looking at the webpages, they can understand what it means and what it's all about. If we go to recommendation nine, oh, it says six here. Nine, communication arrangements for ONS. No, that's the wrong one. Oh, right, I'm looking at the wrong page. Sorry. The officers have very kindly given me some notes as to what they're going to do to implement the recommendations, and I missed it. Recommendation nine, members to offer a steer about possible structure options. Is that agreed? Recommendation ten? Yes, Michael? There's going to be one, if you all agree, this isn't agreed yet, we are proposing one scrutiny committee and boards that will do the overview, as well as anything else they want to do. Well, you haven't decided yet. We are recommending the word board. Okay? Well, we have to have... Okay, understand that. Fiona, can you...
On, that's, was it explicitly committee with a small c, as in a gathering of people? And regardless of how many committees or boards or whatevers, one of them needs to be designated as the crime of disorder committee, not that there is just one committee.
Okay. Is that agreed? Thank you, Fiona. Recommendation eleven? Yes, certainly.
I beg your pardon. I'm not quite sure whether the annual review of the constitution or the member code of conduct is audit committee material, in that it's, I mean, the audit committee is going to be more bean counters on it than, to a point.
It doesn't have to, it can have other people too.
Yes, but we don't want the audit committee to be such a large committee that it can't do its job effectively either. I'm just putting in maybe possibly, because it has pretty firm, including the annual review and the member code. So...
But the recommendation only says...
Should be reviewed.
To be reviewed with consideration. You can say no when it's reviewed. Okay? We've given all options there.
All right.
Okay. Recommendation eleven, is that agreed? Recommendation twelve? Agreed? Thank you very much. Recommendation thirteen, if I miss anybody that wants to say something, do shout. Is that agreed? Thank you. Recommendation fourteen? Agreed? Sorry, John?
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I'm tripping over the words on this again. The council adopts the principle that ONS needs to be selective in identifying the areas it wishes to scrutinise. Are we saying the ONS committee? I mean, are we saying the chairman, or is it the executive, however that decision is made? I mean, we discussed earlier that it was to be the ONS committee, and I think that probably needs clarity.
It can be either the chairman recommending something, or it can be the committee suggesting something. In corporate, I always ask the committee if they want to scrutinise anything, if they want to add things to the work programme. So it really is a committee with the chairman to decide what they want to do. If you're in corporate, you may say to me, I want to scrutinise the contract for house building. We can add that to the programme, and we can do a scrutiny role on it. You see where I'm coming from? It is not just one person, it can be the committee can make a recommendation to do something as well as the chairman. Andrew?
Are you suggesting it's only the overview committee, the scrutiny committee, and not the overview, the boards?
The boards can do it as well. But the scrutiny committee has a role across everything. But we do need to write the terms of reference for it, because it's different. Is that all right, John? Thank you. Recommendation fourteen, is that agreed? Fifteen? Sixteen? Andrew?
Thank you, Chairman. This is where I'd like to comment, that I don't like the idea of this rolling programme. It seems to indicate a routine thing.
I'm sorry, it seems to...
Indicate a very much a routine thing, we're going to see every executive member on a sort of rolling thing. That's not the way it should happen. The committees should be calling the appropriate executive holder on the really important issues of the day to question them. We should be focusing on the important issues, not talking to the executive about all the routine things that they do. That's the way the select committee system works in Parliament. They call the witnesses, they call ministers, and they question them, and that's what scrutiny is all about. And I don't like the idea of a rolling programme, it just indicates a routine thing that it's not going to achieve anything very much.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. My understanding of recommendation sixteen was that it would include a planned rolling programme of attendance by executive portfolio holders. In case we haven't called a portfolio holder before us during the year, then we'll be sure to see that portfolio holder. And it doesn't preclude that we can still call portfolio holders before us as and when we wish.
And that may trigger scrutiny. Carol?
I agree with Andy on this one. I really don't think the ONS is a place for the executive to come and tell us what they want us to hear. I really think they can do that by email, they can do it in all sorts of ways to give us an update on what they're doing. And I'm with Andy here, if we want to see an executive, a portfolio holder, we call them in. I really don't want them floating in and out, we've had it in the past. You know, as I say, no disrespect to present and future members of the executive, but you do get more than enough time for us to try and find out what you're thinking. And, you know, at ONS, that's our meeting, and I certainly don't want you floating in giving me an update. Do it by email the day before, I'll be perfectly happy with that.
I think the reason we put this in is because we don't see them at all. And this was trying to be a bit of belt and braces, and what we wanted to make sure of is we knew what was going on. And that is when if something was happening on the spatial strategy, we can home in on it and decide if we want to do scrutiny. But members, if you don't want to include that, then, you know, you can vote against the recommendation. Michael?
Chairman, I see what Andy's saying about the planned rolling bit, and I would like the planned rolling to come out, so it includes a programme of attendance. I do think that if an ONS want to, for example, you know, ask the, either the planning or the portfolio holder, or the right ones portfolio holder, to answer some questions, that is a very different scenario than them coming to ONS because we've got a discussion item and then giving us the, if you like, the hard sell. This, as I understand it, they will be in the dock, in inverted commas, to answer questions if the overview and scrutiny think there's something important coming up that they really want to get to grips with and quiz the portfolio holder. I mean, it's not going to be a, you know, it shouldn't be an easy ride, and it shouldn't be a PR exercise. It should be answering properly questions to give the portfolio something to think about or to help the portfolio holder, because subsequently we can have a debate without the portfolio there, to actually guide him or her in things that perhaps are not going the way we want it.
Thank you. Nabil?
I totally agree with Carol and Andy regarding it, and I think I will back up as well their suggestions.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we really need to emphasise the importance of the executive and their role. They should know it, understand it, and bring it to us and to be held to account. It's really important. That's where the previous administration has failed, because it hasn't understood the severity, the essentialness of it all, coming to, what is it, it's going to put a portfolio holder on the spot and make them credible if they can stand up to scrutiny and answer what is being asked of them. The whole point of somebody coming and being held to account, I think, is critical. Like Carol and like other people, I don't want to see it where we're in overview scrutiny and a portfolio holder comes along and sells us a pitch. That is the other way around. The portfolio holders are there to support us, not the other way around, and it's up to them to be held to account, know their subject, and when elected, as they have been elected for all the right reasons. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Did you want to say something? Yes, Jenny?
Thank you, Chairman. I hope we're not going to be aggressive in our debate with anybody. I believe that this report covers involvement with portfolio holders, with the executive, and I think that we, rather than interrogation, want to work with the executive.
But sometimes interrogation, no.
Yes, you're scrutinising, but I think that, I think that what, you know, if we're going to, that was, you know, I actually felt quite, oh my goodness, they're going to call me and I'm going to be absolutely shredded. It's critical friend is what overview and scrutiny should be. Critical friend, not a judge and jury necessarily. I'm sorry, but I don't agree with that approach. I think we need to remember that we're all working together, and I think that we shouldn't be employing aggressive methods to interrogate people.
Jim, hang on.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just suggest here, recommendation sixteen, that we take out a planned rolling programme of, and just say to include attendance by executive portfolio holders, rather than a planned rolling thing, you know?
Are we happy with that? We take out... Carol?
I really don't think holding portfolio holders to account is being aggressive. In the past, portfolio holders could stand up in this council chamber, they knew their brief, and they could answer the questions. Now they read the notes. Now, I'm sorry, if you do not know your brief well enough to answer questions without reading out a prepared statement, then you shouldn't hold on to that portfolio. And what I think we're doing, we're letting people get away with not really getting on top of their brief, because we're not scrutinising them. It's not a question of being aggressive. If somebody questions me on my role as a councillor, and I cannot answer the questions, then I should not be a councillor. It was the same when I was working, if I couldn't do the job, chuck me out. And all we're asking is that when executive members come to ONS, we invite them as back benches, we ask them the questions that we want to ask them, because we are uneasy about what they're going to say. We do not want more prepared speeches read out at ONS, read out at council. We want portfolio holders who have the confidence, the guts, the knowledge, the humanity, the patience, skill, whatever it takes, to come along and answer a few questions from colleagues on the ONS. It's not aggressive, it's professional. It's what they should be able to do if they're taking home an allowance for being a portfolio holder. It's as simple as that, it's not aggression.
Carol is absolutely right. No. Can I have Andy? And Andy, this will be your last opportunity...
Thank you, Chair.
...to ask a question.
I think I did kick this particular discussion off, so I trusted you with what Carol said, it's not a question of being aggressive, it's a question of actually trying to make sure that the council takes good decisions. One of the problems in the council, actually, is far too many decisions are taken behind closed doors. And the actual formal meetings of the executives that are open to the public are very much just rubber stamping meetings, the rubber stamp things that have been decided behind the scenes. The same applies to the full council meeting, and it's very, very difficult to scrutinise things where you don't actually know the basis on which the decision was taken. So it's not a question of being aggressive, it's a question of trying to make sure the council takes good decisions. And I'll say the great majority of the decisions taken by this council are good decisions, but there's a few aren't actually, and that's the purpose of the open union scrutiny... but there's a few aren't actually, and that's the purpose of the Open Union Scrutiny Committee, to try and avoid bad decisions being taken. Thank you, Chairman.
Jenny?
Thank you, Pat. What I was hearing just now was actually anger, I think, being brought from the old regime, and I don't think the new regime is going to be the same at all. And I don't think that you're going to have to feel so angry about the set-up. You know, I just did hear quite a lot of anger there, and I think that if we're going to move forward, then we've all got to remember that we're all in the same team, we're all seeking the same result, the best we can find for our residents. That's the only point I was trying to make.
Brian?
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder if I might shorten this debate here on this particular recommendation, suggest ONS work programmes to include attendance by executive portfolio holders to answer questions from ONS as part of the ONS function to hold to account.
Are we happy with that? Did you get that, Fiona? Thank you. Recommendation sixteen as amended. We agreed? Thank you. Recommendation seventeen? Agreed? Recommendation eighteen? Is that agreed? Thank you. Nineteen? Is that agreed? Thank you. That's a really important one. Yes, Andrew?
Can I just clarify? Who appoints the various members? Is it... Who appoints? Supposing we set up...
The committee, the board, the committee, whatever. It's done. If we're having a corporate meeting, it is the corporate committee that decide on the task and finish group and appoint the members. If the matter concerns, this is my view, if the matter like the Weyden Lane tip concerns an issue that affects the council as a whole, it may invite members from another ONS to join it. Because we can co-opt.
And we can co-opt from the whole members, apart from members of the executive?
And I think the important part here, I think, is that it doesn't have to be approved by the executive. That's the point.
Exactly. Oh, I'm sorry, Pat.
Sorry, just a very minor point. Co-opted members can't actually vote at the moment. That needs to be addressed. Thank you.
We can look at that. It can go to the Constitution Sig. Okay, that's fine. Are we agreed then? Thank you. Recommendation twenty? Do we agree with that? Recommendation twenty-one? Oh, I'm sorry, Richard.
No, this is actually in relation to twenty-one, but in twenty-one, we're going to carry out an activity which is kept under the review by the OS Management Board, which is discussed in the text, but it seems to me that this should be... Shouldn't there be a recommendation preceding this where the OS Management Board is constituted? Because it hasn't...
No, I'll explain why in a moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we agree, twenty-one? Yes? Great, thank you. We have not yet sat down as a group of people and actually looked at the possible boards and what they're going to be called. Okay? And that's why the ONS Management Board could be the proper ONS committee, it could be the scrutiny committee, it could also be the ONS Management Board. We haven't yet... There are technicalities in here which involve the Constitution Sig, involve viewers' members as to what you want to see, but we can't have more than four. You know, hopefully only three. But one of the major things in here is that to-note reports go on the website. Our last corporate meeting comprised of every single report was to-note. And this is a waste of paper, it's a waste of our time. So we're looking at that. There's a hell of a lot of work still to do, but I hope you all feel that we've tried to do the best job we can. It was a great subcommittee, and we worked well. And I do have to thank Fiona, who was our officer. And there were times when she had to keep her ears closed because of some of the things we said, but she did it very discreetly, and she actually made sure that we got all our witnesses lined up, and she did all the work with other councils as to what they did. So as a committee, subcommittee, we're really grateful to you, Fiona, for that. I'm sorry if I was very informal tonight, but it's a difficult subject, and I thought it was much easier if we were in informal mode. I kept mentioning council every five minutes. So if there's nothing else, I want to thank Robin, whose ear we bent this afternoon and was very, very constructive, I have to say, and Emma, and I think we can certainly move forward in the right way together. But this is just the start of it. But a particular thank you from me to the subcommittee. It was a great working relationship we had, and it worked. So thank you all very much for tonight. Great debate, but do look at your constitution, guys. Thank you.